Good evening, everybody. I will call to order our work session meeting held via WebEx of May 26, 2020. It is 5:45 and we have two items before our council meeting at 7:00. The first item is Assistant Engineer Joe Powers is going to give us an update on the recent and upcoming permit applications, approvals, and construction of small cell wireless installation through the city. And then the second item will be Transportation Jack Bros, who's going to give us an update on the preliminary design of 65th Street Reconstruction between 66th Street and Ray Drive and Nicolet Avenue. And then we will also have for the first item, Community Development Director, Assistant Director Melissa Pellman giving us a proposal to amend the city code related also to small cell wireless. So I will just pass it on to City Manager Rodriguez to kick us off with the first event or first item.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that tonight's, both presentations are informational at this time. So it's a chance for City Council to ask questions. However, the proposal on the small cell to waive the requirement to have a conditional use permit that if based on your feedback tonight would be presented at a future City Council meeting. And of course, the 65th Street final design will eventually be presented to you as well. So eager to hear your feedback tonight. And with that, Assistant City Engineer Joe Powers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thanks for taking the time this evening to chat with us and let us give you a quick update on small cell wireless in the city. Before we started, I wanted to just take 30 seconds real quick. Since I haven't formally met a number of the council members, I've informally met Mayor Reagan Gonzalez a couple of times, but just wanted to give you a quick background on myself. I am a South Minneapolis native. I grew up here in South Minneapolis. I'm in my home here in South Minneapolis right now. But I spent a lot of my childhood in Richfield. So I'm really thrilled to be working for the city now. I came on at the end of, end of last year. So it's been an interesting first couple of months here. But I grew up in the area, you know, I learned to skate at the ice arena. I did my Eagle Scout project at Woodlake. So Richfield is, is really very near and dear to me, even though I'm not a resident. So I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled to be working for the city and I hope to be here a long time. So happy to formally, virtually meet all of you finally and look forward to working with, with all of you on the council here in the future. So with that, I'm going to share a quick presentation on our small cell wireless update. And that should be up now. So let me know if you can't see anything and we'll work on that. Small cell wireless update for the city of Richfield. Just some quick background, I think the council is, is very familiar with all of this so far. You've, you've obviously had a number of discussions and involvement in the, in the process in rolling out small cell wireless throughout the city. So just a reminder basically that wireless companies are rolling out small cell wireless installations really around the country to address coverage gaps and improve service to their customers. And state statutes and FCC rulings over the past number of years require that cities allow wireless companies to install these facilities in the public right of way. They are subject to reasonable conditions or restrictions on their permit applications. We as city staff and public works are working very closely with the wireless companies to, to ensure that these installations are not going to be detrimental to our community, to our residents and the businesses here and to our right of way as, as public work staff, where we have to manage our roadways and our public spaces. So we have two companies so far that have applied for permits within the city of Richfield. Those companies are AT&amp;T and Verizon. We do have co-location agreements with both of those companies. What that means is that the companies have a standing agreement that allows them to co-locate their small cell wireless facilities on city-owned light poles. There, there's a much longer process that goes into this. We still do review each and every application that comes into the city, whether it is going to be a facility that's mounted on a city-owned light pole or a facility that Verizon or AT&amp;T is constructing as a standalone structure in our right of way. So it's, it's by no means a blanket allowance for companies to come in and do whatever they want. The city still has a very stringent review process that we go through to make sure that they are meeting the guidelines that we can legally establish. Quick update on the two companies that we have in town so far. AT&amp;T currently has 10 permits. Those permits were all approved in 2019. And all of those permits are for co-location on city-owned or private utility-owned poles. So there are a couple of permits out there, for instance, where AT&amp;T will be building their structures on utility poles owned by Xcel Energy. So the wooden poles that, that tend to run along rear yard property lines or through alleys. So far, AT&amp;T has constructed two locations in the city. Those are at 66th Street and Lindale Avenue, the northwest corner by the new development of the Chase Bank site. And then the other one is on actually 65th Street and Nicolet Avenue, a block north of 66th. The picture you see here is a photo I took just last week. This is the installation at 65th and Nicolet. Neither of these sites are operational yet. They're both, the, the contractors that built these are working to provide power to both these sites and then in the coming couple of months here. So we expect that they will go live soon. We don't have any indication from AT&amp;T at this point that they're going to be moving forward with construction of the other sites, but they do have the permits approved. So they could move forward at any time with notification to the city that they're starting construction. Quick update on Verizon. The Verizon is a little bit more recent in terms of the work that we're doing with the city. They submitted 17 permits so far this year. We as city staff have approved eight of those permits. Seven are still under review, but we anticipate approving those. Two of the applications of the 17 were rescinded by Verizon after preliminary review by the city. With, without going into too much detail, our staff had, had some concerns about their placement in relation to single-family areas and proximity to residential homes. And so Verizon has actually been very responsive to our comments in, in those areas and rescinded those two applications to try to find a better, a better solution that would be more amenable for our staff and for our, for our citizens in the city. One thing to note so far is that all the applications that have been submitted by Verizon are standalone poles, meaning they will be a new pole in the right of way that houses only the small cell wireless equipment. This is due to not having the standard co-location agreement implemented between the city and Verizon until earlier this year. So these permits were either very far in their design phase with Verizon or had already been submitted to the city before the council approved the co-location agreement between the city and Verizon. So just some quick outlook for what we expect in the next year or two here. It appears that COVID-19 is impacting the short-term outlook for both applications and construction of new facilities. We've, we expected earlier this year that we would have a number of applications coming in particularly from Verizon on the order of 20-plus throughout the rest of the year. Verizon since informed me that they anticipate only installing or, or only applying for an additional five or so locations this year. That it appears that COVID-19 is impacting supply chain and, and other areas in this process. Though that's, that's unconfirmed. One thing to note is that Verizon's intent after this year, so for this first initial batch of 15 permits that we will be approving, and then another up to five permits this year, those will all be standalone, standalone poles in the right of way owned by Verizon. Verizon's intent in 2021 and go co-locate on city light poles or private utility poles wherever possible. The image you see here is a rendering provided by Verizon that shows example of what their facility would look like. Staff is supportive of this option as we feel it's, it's better for us in terms of maintaining our right of way to have fewer structures. So if we can locate a, a facility on a pole that's already existing in the right of way, then it, it provides fewer complications and is just a better situation for the city and for its residents. I do want to share one thing outside of the presentation with you tonight. Our staff is working on putting together a quick map of locations for permits that have been submitted by both AT&amp;T and Verizon. We intend to turn this into more of an interactive map that staff will be able to use during inspection when these facilities are being constructed, where a staff person could go out in the field and on a tablet or a laptop, pull up all of the permit materials on any, any site that's being constructed. And it'll be especially useful to us as well in responding to resident concerns or questions about the small cell process. So I'm going to take down the PowerPoint very quickly here and I'm going to bring up a map in Adobe to just show you what we're working on. So this is just a PDF right now of a map showing all of these small cell locations for which we have permits so far. You can see they're color-coded, blue is AT&amp;T and red is Verizon. The dark blue for AT&amp;T, these two locations up here are the two I noted earlier that have already been constructed. And these lighter blue are permits that have been approved for AT&amp;T. The dark red is Verizon's permits that have been approved. And the light red is Verizon's permits that have been submitted and are under review. So you see a few of them scattered here. We, we don't have any permits or locations so far that have been constructed by, by Verizon. And the one thing I'd like to note on this, and I would request some council feedback if you're willing to give it tonight, is whether you would like to see this map be developed for, for public release. What we could do is, is develop an interactive GIS map that lives on the city's website, where the public could go and actually see these locations and get some of the basic information about, about each site, such as which company owns the site, if it's a standalone pole owned by the company or if it's co-located on a city or private utility pole. So I would definitely appreciate some feedback tonight from council regarding that. And I'm going to turn back over to the PowerPoint. And with that, I'd like to hand off this presentation to Melissa Pellman, who will give you a brief update on some modifications to our city code in relation to our small cell wireless policies. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Joe. I wanted to talk to you about some modifications that we're proposing to the regulations related to small cell. Like Joe mentioned, we have limited authority to regulate these installations. They, we can put, what are, what are the words, reasonable conditions and restrictions on them. We cannot prohibit them. The other thing that we can do is to make a conditional use permit required if these installations want to go into a single-family residential district. When the initial regulations came out, we did that. We did it immediately as a means by which to try to regulate these. We weren't sure how fast they were going to come in. We weren't exactly sure what they were going to look like. The technology was changing very quickly. We immediately adopted provisions to make a conditional use permit required in residential districts. Also, we do have some screening and separation language in the city code right now, although it's fairly vague. If you read through the materials that we provided, you could see the additions that we're putting in, but you could also see the, the general language that's in there right now that says staff has the authority to talk to you about spacing and, and require some screening with landscaping, but it's not very specific or prescriptive. What we're proposing now, based on having gone through a couple of public hearings and seen installations come on, are that we remove what has, is really an ineffective conditional use permit. I would actually call it disingenuous. We have these public hearings to talk about an installation that's going to go into a residential district. And we invite the neighbors to speak on that issue. And none of them want it for the most part, and we have no authority to deny it. We have no authority to talk about health impacts. The FCC sets those limits. The neighborhood gets very upset. They get upset at staff, they get upset at the planning commission, they get upset at City Council that they've taken their time to come to this meeting to give us the feedback and we're just going to rubber, in their words, rubber stamp it. From our perspective, we, we can't do a whole lot other than that. And so it, it leads to just a feeling of bad feelings on all sides. Everybody feels beat up, nobody feels heard. So we're proposing to remove that CUP and replace it with aesthetic and spacing guidelines that would apply to all of the installations, not just those in residential districts, but also those in the commercial districts and, and the mixed-use districts. Joe, could you advance the slide?
And I just want to do a brief time check. I'm wondering if it's possible to wrap up the first item like 610, 615?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
I can zip right through these. I think that everybody is going to be pretty familiar with these as we've gone through these conditional use permits. This is what we've heard from you. This is what we've heard from the planning commission. We want screening. We want these things to look like they're part of the pole anyway. We want them spaced out. We want them to be colored like the installations that they're co-locating with. Another thing that we've put in here is to locate on the property lines. The idea here is that if an installation is going in on your block, it's not going to go get installed in front of your window. It's hopefully going to where it's not in direct sight of any property owner looking out their front. We talk about ground-mounted equipment standards, again, painting, landscaping, reducing just the aesthetic impacts there, and then limiting lighting and signage on the installations. I just wanted to mention that we looked around at a number of other communities when we were preparing these and we worked with Kennedy and Graven. We got a number of examples from them. So these are pulled from several other communities. They're all fairly similar. The thing that does differ is the spacing requirement, and I'd like some feedback from you on that. Some of communities are at about 150 space requiring that. It's a radial distance. But if you think of that in terms of Richfield, that's about three lots, three single-family lots apart. One or two communities that we did see are as far apart as 300 feet. And that in Richfield is about a half block. A block in Richfield is a little over 600 feet. So we put this in kind of as a placeholder, but we'd like to, we'd like to hear from you. We're trying to balance, obviously, people's technology needs. People want fast internet. They want good service, especially now when so many people are working from home. But also there are these aesthetic concerns. So I'm going to leave it at that. I provided the whole draft ordinance to you and I'm, I'm happy to talk through any concerns you have on that.
Great. So I'm wondering if we can do our questions and comment, our questions from council members first briefly overall? And then I see the one question of guidance is map. Do we want to share a map with the public and get feedback on that? And then we also want to look at the recommendation of removing the CUP and then looking at these requirements and looking at the spacing as well. So maybe we just take it one by one to make sure we get you what you need. So any questions from council? Councilmember Supple?
I just had one clarification. When I was reading through the proposed change ordinance, it was saying that you should make the warning signs as small as possible. And I didn't know if that was counterproductive to having a warning. If you make it so tiny, nobody can see it, or can you give more information about that?
Sure. I think the idea here is that we don't want like a glow-in-the-dark, very vibrant sign or the pole wrapped in signage. That's what we're trying to avoid. Well, what those warning signs typically do where they're placed is where the, the emission levels change from general public to occupational. And so they're generally higher up. They're not actually at a place where the public can may even read them. It's for the people that will be maintaining the poles. So if our public works department, the folks that are maintaining those poles, that kind of thing have concerns about this, you know, that's certainly, we do not have to put this in here. What I will say is that OSHA and the FCC have minimum standards for these signs in terms of signage and legibility and lighting and those kinds of things. And all of those will still be met. What we were trying to do was avoid people wrapping the signs in garish signage.
Thank you. I'm Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions, but I think they're all fairly quick. I was going to comment on that too. I know some residents had spoken up that they would like signage and signage that is, I mean, obviously not garish, that doesn't help anyone. But if we can figure out a reasonable, like small something that can be at like resident height, I think some people would appreciate that. I don't know if that is possible. The, I, in terms of the distance, I, 150 feet seems small to me. I think based on the feedback we heard, I believe it was when someone from AT&amp;T was here, they had said that they interfere with one another. And so there, it likely wouldn't work to have more than one on the same block. So it, it maybe is a moot point, but I would be supportive if other communities have done 300 feet and that's been deemed a reasonable requirement that I, I think we should go for, for more rather than less. I think to, to the earlier question, I think sharing that map would be great. My main question though is, I feel like we've talked about this before, but help me remember, with the current CUP setup, what is, what are the actual reasons we could deny it? And are we, are we losing anything there? I know they haven't been relevant in the ones we've had so far, but wanted a reminder.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Wayland. There really are no valid reasons for us to deny. We can't make any claims about the health. The only thing, I'm not sure why the legislature really even gave us this power because it's silly. We have no authority, none that the attorneys and I have really found none, no ability to deny these. I, I can't think of a condition.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to say that I think, I think it would be helpful for, for residents to have access to that map and just as a general principle, to the extent that we have information and we have a channel to get that information out and it's not overly burdensome on staff. My default posture is to give residents more, more information. In that spirit, I wonder if we couldn't also, because there's been so many concerns around these, these towers, also on that map, give the contact information to either our, our, our state representatives or Verizon or AT&amp;T themselves, but to the extent that they want to, to advocate for themselves and for our community, that they might have an opportunity to, a, a direction in which they can, they can, they can get further information and advocate.
Thanks, Councilmember Troutman. I'll respond to that very quickly. I think some of my intent, and I didn't mention this earlier, is also to set up a section of our city website where a lot of this public-facing information on small cell would live. And included on that portion of our website would be all the contact info for the various wireless companies. So, so residents could reach out to them directly with questions or concerns. We'd, we'd like as the city to provide as much info as we can, but at a certain point, as Melissa's made previously tonight, we only have so much authority and we will need to direct those questions, I think, to the wireless companies.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple?
One other thing I did want to say thank you to the staff for the oversight you have been doing. So it sounds like a couple of times when you brought up resident concerns, the companies made some changes and I think that's a good use of, of staff time and it's advocating for residents, so thank you.
Absolutely. I wanted to check in. I know Councilmember Garcia is on the line. Councilmember Garcia, I know we can't see your video. So do you have any questions or comments on this item?
No, not really. You know, I, I'm, you know, I read all the information and I've been listening to what's going on. And, and it is unfortunate that, that we're giving power, that we're allowed power from, by the legislature that, that it's not really there. So, but that's, that's the way the legislature works.
Thank you. I'll keep us moving along. So I'll just weigh in quick. I also want to share that I am in support of putting out the, the map for residents. I think it will be useful and as already discussed, just making sure we scope out, you know, this is what the city can do and cannot do. Here's who to contact for what, just so it's not confusing. Those type of items are not confusing for our residents when they see that map. I know Councilmember Troutman and Wayland and Supple have said that they're in support of that. Councilmember Garcia, it sounds like you are also in support of the map for the public, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Now the next two items, let's talk about the spacing. So Councilmember Wayland said that he, you know, as much as possible, if we can get them spaced out apart as much as possible, which in a way that makes sense, that that's what you would be in support of, I would echo the same perspective. What do other council members think on the spacing of the poles?
I would agree with spacing them out.
Yeah, me too.
As much as is safe, as much as we can do.
So it sounds like the consensus is far apart as, as possible. And then the last one is let's discuss the CUP, getting rid of the CUP and then clarifying the guidance that we have from city staff. So weigh in if folks can weigh in on that item.
Well, it sounds like we don't really have any power to deny them anyway and it'd be much more transparent to just be honest about that. So I think the recommendation to get rid of the CUP makes sense.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And I, I agree completely with my, my colleague, Councilmember, Member Supple, that I, I understand the spirit behind it, which is to say everything we can do to try and assert our authority is worth doing. But I really appreciate the staff pointing out, we also don't want to be caught in the trap of people wanting to avail themselves of the, the government and kind of creating a, a tiger trap or, or a dead end where they just find themselves in a, in a pit, not, which is the opposite of our, of our intention. So I appreciate sensitivity to wanting to be, to clearly communicate with, with our, our citizens.
Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I, yeah, I agree. I think the one thing I'd be, well, first of all, the one thing I really want to express some appreciation for is all of the clarifying of the guidelines we can set. I think that is really the, the most important piece of what we're, what we're talking about. I'm okay with getting rid of the CUP process. I think the one thing I'd be sad to miss is that there are certainly some residents who really appreciate getting notified when these are near them. But I think that if we create the public-facing map and share that widely, that that could serve a similar function to letting residents know if there is one of these near their, their homes, since there are certainly people who appreciate knowing that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilmember Garcia and the CUP and the guidelines?
No, I, I agree with the comment.
Great. And I, oh, thank you. Sorry, did you have something else? Great. And I, oh, thank you. Sorry. Did you have something else?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, why did you ask me?
Oh, I thought I cut you off.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, thank you. And I would just agree with my colleagues. I think it definitely does not set us up and or the community up or staff, anyone involved. If the CUP process is not effective, and thank you so much to all of the work that our staff has done to navigate this process, knowing that it's an issue that we have very little control over and that it is a very hot topic of a lot of concern in our community. Staff has done a really great job. And thank you to the residents, too, who have continued to advocate for our community. So is that what you need for this first session? Did you guys get everything answered?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I will move us to the next portion of our work session, which is with Transportation Engineer Jack Bros, but I will pass it to City Manager Rodriguez first.
In the interest of time, Transportation Engineer Jack Bros, you take it away. Thanks.
All right. Hi, folks. Going to quickly dive to walk you through. So for our outcomes, I want you to understand that we have an open house next, hopefully our last one scheduled June 1st through 8th. These are all now online. And hopefully then on June 10th, we'll go to a transportation commission and that would queue a recommendation after that meeting to you for recommendation of the project. So with that timeframe, I'll give you an update. If you recall, this segment of 65th Street by the hub was started a while back. We paused and now we've kind of expanded the project, the full length of 65th Street. We've also incorporated a 2014 project that was studied on Lyndale to accommodate bicycles. That's going to be more just paint. We also will talk briefly about a flood control project and some of the other wayfinding that we were talking about in this part of town. These are all in your packet. These are just the boards that we had online and at the previous open houses showing our project goals. We're compliant with all the city plans and policies. This slide was kind of a summary of what we heard in the previous meetings. We turned that into a problem statement and tried to methodically, as engineers would, work towards a solution. We are again going to typical the Richfield. There's going to be proposed roundabout, and with that comes the typical comments and questions. We've also incorporated, there's flooding that occurs near the hub. And what the master plan for the flood improvements includes a pipe from the hub area to Richfield Lake. And that would be also incorporated into the scope of the project when it gets constructed. So it's not done at a different late and it's all coordinated. One thing I do want to jump out is if you look here at this entrance to the park, referred to the wayfinding. There was connectivity plan that was developed for the downtown area. This indicates the area of 65th Street as you go into the trail system around the lake. We are going to be working with Amy Markle to see how this may potentially fold into this project. So we might actually be folding that into the scope so that we will get to the mitigation that's going to be required for a pipe that would a pipe that may find its way into that lake. So as we move forward, this is the series, like a summary of comments, but not not a lot of pulling together. It's more of a listing. So you see, we did get a fairly high response rate, probably double from what we get in a physical open house. So it was interesting that the virtual open house got fairly well received by people. What did we learn from that? You know, we had kind of open ended questions. Our first question was, do you think we're on track to the problems that are out there in our solution? And you see, we got a pretty strong response to that. Rest of our questions were were more open. Do you have any comments in general about the project? And so most of this, I'll just tell you that this project and everything we've done. So there wasn't a lot of surprise. People get it, trails, sidewalks. You know, so so there was, there's not a lot of surprises what's happening here. And like I said, if it goes through, they kind of supportive of that in general. So there wasn't the need for a lot of education. You see here, we get the rounded doubters, still questions about, you know, how how do roundabouts work? So again, this is in your packet. So I don't know if there's any specific questions you have. We do have some little detail, the roundabout and this Pillsbury connection in a minute in more detail. And so these were more, again, open ended questions, trying to get people to just give us feedback on the project and anything that we should know. At this point, kind of just walk through the the various part of the layout. We have 65th Street that goes around from the east end of Niccolat all the way to 66th Street by past the post office. The Lyndale improvements is just paint. It's reconfiguring the lanes to allow for bike lanes and some on street parking. The roundabout is proposed. The existing road is very similar to the proposed road in the segment from 66th Street to Lyndale in that it's two lane with on street parking. And the difference is that we're going to introduce a sidewalk on the south side, which doesn't exist today. Two lane road is then extended across the tracks and no on street parking. And then it goes to a three lane section that allows the left turns into the hub to efficiently allow traffic to move and to gain access to the new development. What I'll do is I'll try to zoom in here. Do this in a little bit slower fashion. So so at 66th Street, this again is the same lane configuration as there is today, along with on street parking. What's different here is there's going to be a trail on the west side, which should then be part of the trail system that's on the north side for the rest of the corridor. And then we introduced a sidewalk on the south side as we go along the whole corridor. And so you see, this is really what we have today. It's just a little bit more narrow because it's an old wider road. And this is full reconstruction. As we move our way up up to near the liquor store, you see, it's really the same configuration, two lane. We put in as much on street park as possible. We did hear that over the years and through this process, the entry parking is very important. Let me come back to the roundabout after I quickly go through the striping on on Lyndale just provides bike lanes. There's no construction. It's more of just paint. And as we go to the north, there'll be some minor improvements to the crosswalks by 64th. This is the area that has been getting more crossings specifically because of the amenities on the on the west side of Lyndale. There's also some opportunity to put on street parking in this segment as we re-stripe it. So this will end up being a single lane north and single lane southbound with left turn lanes as appropriate, two bike lanes. That will be Lyndale would look like. The roundabout fits in a a new, not a circular fashion, let me just say. I think we've had some fun names of what this shape might look like. So if you guys want to vote on what shape you think this is, it might be a potato. I don't know what it is. But the idea is it's a single lane roundabout. And one of the things that we looked at at the Transportation Commission, we had some discussion about the Wendy's driveway. So they do have a driveway right here. And as you come out of the circle, you're going pretty slow. You're going that 15 and this becomes like anybody coming this direction would be right in. Anybody following closely behind, they're only going 15 miles an hour. So from a technical point of view, major concern with that. Kind of pause. We can come back to that as we'll finish the rest of it. But but that is something that the commission, Transportation Commission did spend a lot of time discussing. And I think that one of the major issues is that if you are walking today across on the sidewalk or going across the south leg, you would cross at a signal. In the this configuration, you would actually have to cross the Wendy's driveway, then cross the street. So you've introduced another conflict. But the speeds are down like roundabouts typically would. And I know personally, I may have stopped there for lunch once or twice. If you're pulling in, making a U-turn or using this back driveway, this can be kind of a challenging intersection today. So I think we look at this as from pretty much all our perspectives, it's pretty much a win, but nothing is ever 100%. I think that's the lesson learned in the transportation business. Railroad track, you see, it's just a two lane road with no on street parking. I could clarify. We do not have any on street bike lanes proposed on this corridor. There's the full system on 66th Street. This has a trail on the north side, a sidewalk on the south side. So you see, this this kind of really simplifies the project and the cost ultimately to be really a two lane road with a trail on one side and a sidewalk on the south side. The last part of the project. Like I said before, it's it's really the same. It's the street has trail on the north side, which it does today. We introduce a sidewalk on the south side. This is a three lane road so that any left turns can be out of the flow of traffic, gaining access as we go along the hub. So I'll pause at that point because there's a couple of things, specifically the Pillsbury connection here and the roundabout. I have trouble seeing everybody, so just shout questions at me if you have anything other than those two areas that you want to discuss.
Councilmembers all here. Can I go ahead?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Can you say a little bit more about the on street parking at 64th and Lyndale? Because I know we've had a lot of redevelopment in that area and there've been a lot of questions about whether there's going to be enough parking. So can you talk about how much parking you're going to add on street?
Yeah, the the short answer is as much as we can fit. So we don't have any reason to, other than it doesn't, driveways, etc. Yes, maybe if I could try. I think this kind of indicates where you see the outside is parking. It's actually on both sides. You've got the bike lane. So we are looking at this all the way up to 63rd, 62. So you see, it goes the whole way and we've tried to, with a three lane road, bike lanes, put in as much on street parking. Up here, it'll only be on the west side as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful because I think we need to get as much parking as we can in that area. The other concern is it's my it's my understanding that when we redo the storm water collection, it's not going to add any water to Richfield Lake. But currently, as it stands, a lot of the trails are flooded a lot of times. So is anything going to be done to try and help those trails or to to make it so that the trails aren't flooded? I appreciate that we're not adding anything to it, but it's still a problem as it exists. Thank you.
Yeah, what I would just say about the flood control project, they're going to study that in more detail. They're just beginning that that detail work. And that'll coincide with this project going into final design. But from a transportation, well, I'll just say, maybe Joe has more to say about that, but it's it's part of the comprehensive plan for the flood mitigation. And so again, the water goes to the same spot. It's kind of a timing thing. I think some of the problems might be associated with the outlet that goes to Woodlake that might be filled or blocked during some of these events with trash that might be causing some of that flooding. And be able to look at that in more detail and final plan.
Mayor, this is Kristen Asher.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll just add to that a little bit that we're looking at the whole system. And right now, the problems at Woodlake, I mean, at Richfield Lake are basically caused by the problems at Woodlake. And like Jack said, if the outlet gets plugged up, then it's going to cause a problem. So keeping that outlet clean. And and we're looking at the Don Pablo's lift station that was a temporary measure for Woodlake until we had the gravity flow to the 494 system that they're not doing anymore. So now we're looking at more of a permanent replacement of that lift station to increase the capacity to help Woodlake out, which will then help Richfield Lake out. But as part of 65th Street, we weren't planning on doing any trail work. We weren't going to help or hurt the water levels there. But we are looking at the system. It's all connected. And so hopefully, in fact, that lift station at at in Don Pablo's, the old Don Pablo's, we call it Don Pablo's Lift. We're hoping to get that done yet this year. So you'll be hearing more about that as part of this discussion.
Additional questions?
I'll I'll jump in. The I am curious to hear about the more about the Pillsbury and roundabout, so I want to save some time for that. But there are a couple bike and pedestrian questions brought up in the the open house. Did several people had asked that the trail be widened since there aren't on street bike lanes? Was that, is that already reflected in this? Is there room for that or was that not possible?
That's a detail that we normally put into the plans. It has to do with the fit. So on on screen here, you might be able to see some teal colored lines that are the property or the right away lines. It may fit, but when you do it in the third dimension, when you try to smooth things out, it might get into the point where you're removing a lot of trees, you're having other impacts. So at this point, we aren't prepared to answer the question if a wider trail fits until we get into that third dimension and see how it fits. We don't want to commit to a wider trail and then find out we're taking out a lot of trees for it.
Okay, thank you. Next question was with the the trail slash sidewalk north of the hub. It was asked if there were plans to, I mean, there's still several cul-de-sacs or dead ends there that are not changing. Are there plans for the sidewalk to have connections so that pedestrians or bikes can connect to those streets?
Yeah, that's a detail that's today, I think you might be able to see a little connection right in here right now. So that, yes, that 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 would be part of the detail that we would continue on design.
Okay. And the next one, I saw someone had asked about, and this presumably was along Lyndale, I think would be where it most is affected. Are there any plans to to change or edit anything about the bus stops along with this reconstruction plan?
There's not any specific proposals to make any bus stop changes at this point.
Then I'm assuming there are several people who brought up the the hub potentially getting redeveloped. Are I know we don't have a solid answer yet on what is happening or when that is happening. But presumably, in to the best of our knowledge, this will be compatible with their plans for the hub?
Yes, we did some early coordination back when we started the project. Where we focus specifically in this area and a lot, so these driveways that you kind of see matched in here, there is a closure of the driveway on the curve. And the main entrance would be in the because there's utilities, etc., would be this is the old Pillsbury alignment. And that that would be what they have asked us to make the main entrance. And so this intersection is still under engineering. And so this intersection is still under engineering study, trying to balance the, if you would, the demand from the hub to come on this side and the demand from the neighborhood to come the other way. So this intersection will probably look like a hybrid. If you're coming from the north or coming from the south, it's serving two different purposes. And so we don't have that yet to show you, but that's our next engineering study for this. But yes, the hub is is a critical stakeholder for that.
Okay, thank you. And then one final one, I promise. I just did want to lift up the, you talked already a bit about that third Wendy's entrance. I just wanted to ask, is it typical for for a restaurant or fast food place to have three entrances like that? Or I I guess what is, how detrimental would it be to close that entrance? Anecdotally, it just feels like two is fairly standard.
The corner layout that they have is challenging and and they just rebuilt this to this configuration. What they have, this is actually where you order for your drive-through, you drive around the building. So there's there's kind of a circulation, a single-lane, one-way circulation that is fed by this. And in, you know, so if you close that driveway, you would have a lot more circulation to order and then pick up your food. So if you came in this driveway, you'd have to drive around the entire building just to, you know, so there would be a lot more movement inside the parking lot. The answer to your question, I I say is, you could make those changes. One of the problems, one of our issues we found over time is those can be a very costly right-of-way impact. Not necessarily a typically driven argument does very well when you're in court negotiating the the costs. There was some access change to a hotel further south on Lyndale. And if Kristen's still online, if you wanted to comment about what a minor access change to that hotel cost the city.
Too much.
Too much, yeah.
It was over a million for sure. And we didn't even touch their property. We just limited, I think we only limited one movement. I think they couldn't take a left out of their property. And it cost us a lot of money.
So we we are going to be meeting with them and we are going to have an option to close that driveway. But we think in the long run, technically, we we're confident our our roundabout designer has designed similar roundabouts with driveways in a close proximity like this. And so technically, there's there's not an engineering concern that there would be an issue here. But we will look at some other configurations with this closed. We're just concerned that it might become a huge cost for the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I saw Councilmember Troutman had his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to 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 say a couple of a couple of thank yous to Jack and to the staff and to the Transportation Commission. And just as as pertained to this project, just just as a reminder for for everybody that there are so, so many walkers that use from Village Shores and Grammar Sea and Woodlake. All there are literally thousands of folks that are that are there that use those trails and they're our most fragile, not not everybody, of course, but there there are folks with a lot of disabilities and a lot of mobility issues. And right now, they have to go either more than a block out of their way or they have to walk through through parking lots, either through the Village Shores, HCMC parking lot or the Pizza Luce parking lot. And and on the south side, there is no sidewalk. So no sidewalk going to 65th and no sidewalk on 65th. And and sometimes Lake Richfield, as opposed to Woodlake, is the lake of choice because it does have blacktop asphalt paths that are easier for folks with mobility issues. So this is just such such an important project from from that perspective. And I appreciate Jack and everybody advocating for this. I also really want to just appreciate, just say thank you, Jack, for the discussion that you that you facilitated around Pleasant and Pillsbury avenues at our most recent transportation meeting. And you gave us history and context from an equity perspective of how how those road closures came to be, how the one-way streets came to be and how it it privileged certain single, you know, like single-family homes, but really was was less kind to to the multifamily housing that had more children. Yeah, and because of your framing of that issue, I just think we had such a better conversation on the Transportation Commission. And that, like, it's just, it 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 may seem like a slightly small thing, but it's a huge, huge thing in my mind, and I'm sure with in mind of my colleagues in the council. So I just wanted to just thank you very publicly and just let my colleagues know that that work like that is not unnoticed and you just really guided the the commission to have a much more robust and healthy and equitable conversation. So thanks for that.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia on the phone, is there anything you'd like to share?
Well, not really. I I tell you, this has been such a challenging area. And and all of those folks around the Pillsbury area have been very, very concerned. So I'm really impressed with what's been going on. And I think Kristen and Jack have done a great job. And and it's like, like Councilmember Troutman says, you know, we really, or I don't know if it was Councilmember Whelan maybe. But, you know, it it just, it's just a marvel that so many things like this are happening in spite of what's going on in the in the real world, i.e. the virus. So, you know, always hats off. I'm always impressed with with our staff and and so they've never disappointed me.
That's it.
We have just a few minutes briefly on that topic, as Simon mentioned. Simon, I've actually added a few slides to make it a little bit more clear. You know, the concept of equity discussions, it becomes challenging. I'm borrowing a slide here that deals with health and food and how does equity work? And on the left, it's it's equal. And equity provides the bigger boost to those that really need it. And so it's it's not equally. And so how does that apply to transportation? And what I'll just show you, you can see, this is the hub back in the 1967. 65th Street went straight across. You see that Pillsbury was a two-way street that just was part of the grid. I could maybe zoom in, but you can see there's a little frontage road and a parking lot on the north side of 65th Street that connected the grid. And so you had a two-way road, a one-way road. If we go back to where we're at today, there was a decision to make this a one-way out, putting even more pressure on the into the neighborhood access along the row of apartments that we intentionally put by the tracks. And so trying to look at our process we're doing. And we have a long list of performance measures that we try to use on our projects. And we've added this one for equity. I apologize, this is not in your packet. But to try to look at how we're considering an improvement. And maybe we can't fix it into an ideal situation because that's always our problem. It's always a trade-off. But so we are, and I can provide this to you, but this is something that we're adding to all our projects as to how we can actually look at livability, access to services, healthy food, and our our modal choices along with investment priorities. So so it is something, and I will just, by just showing a few slides, this shows graphically the neighborhood as it is today. So you see the closed-off road in a one-way out, knowing that historically it wasn't that, but that's the current condition. This is a hypothetical we brought to the very early open houses where these roads are completely opened and create a new grid. We got a lot of neighborhood feedback that this was not, and I think it's still treading through. This may be more equitable, but it's not a good process at this point when we start to hear the change to this neighborhood and and these neighbors. You could look at it this way, here's an extreme example where they're all closed. And now you all have to come in off a nicklet. And what we're recommending is more of this establishment that was more as-built back in the day, pre-1967, where we just leave the cul-de-sacs and we open up Pillsbury all the way to 65th as a two-way street. And we hope that that puts us in a position to improve that measure for the equity for the homes, the people, the residents that live along the apartments along the tracks. And so that's our goal. This will create, as I said a second ago, we'll come back in more detail. By the time we get your request for approval, is that we will be very cognizant of traffic going north into the neighborhood and south into the hub so that that design doesn't introduce a lot of cut-through traffic, but it still fosters both hub and a more equitable neighborhood.
Thank you so much. I just, I think a lot of the council members asked some of the questions that I also had. And then I would just like to say, if you could go back to that slide that has the list of the equity in transportation, it was like a bullet list, please. Yes, awesome. So this is, to me, a really concrete example of what it would look like to embed equity in every single thing that we do. And and I could be wrong, but I don't think that this has a lot of financial impact, but it's really looking at our processes and when, where we can bake it in and how we can take those considerations into account into our existing process. And and this, I mean, I I just think that's a perfect model right there that we could just be applying and seeing what does that look like in our debt bridge department? What does that look like in community development? What does that look like across the board? And then again, baking it into what we're doing already, but making sure that we are intentionally taking these considerations into account. And and then you see the outcome of of baking that in. So I just want to say thank you. That's an excellent example of of how we can use, implement it right now. And I don't know if there is any additional costs that have been associated or additional time added or things like that with using this framework or not.
I don't think it would matter at all to our process in general. But this equity issue, we did as staff force this conversation early on. And it did create a lot of neighborhood angst. But I think that's a necessary part of making change in the right direction.
Excellent, thank you so much. This has been a great presentation. And just another example of why our Public Works Department gets so many accolades, right? Across the state of Minnesota, folks from across Minnesota, staff, engineers, community members come and learn about what Public Works is doing in Richfield because it's very clear that our Public Works Department is definitely getting it right. And we saw that again with our department head, Director Asher, getting one of the top 10 best public health directors in the country. So again, this is what it looks like. It is a process that's done in collaboration with community, with multiple ways and and opportunities for input to design what our community looks like together. And here's a great example of what equity looks like and how we design our infrastructure for for today, but also 30, 40, 50 years into the future. And being very, you know, a prudent stewards of our community's resources in the process. So thank you to everybody for for continuing to bring that to the community. And like you said, it is interesting to see, you know, we're giving the community and we're pretty much putting the same thing out there that folks are getting used to now, right? And so you get to see as people get more comfortable kind of how that shift for support changes and and how we're kind of growing and shifting together. So I know it's been hard over the years and I know you probably have all had nightmares about roundabouts and and comments. But it's it's really paying off and I just appreciate the consistency and leadership that our staff have has put into this.
Very well said, Mayor.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Director Asher.
Yeah, I just will thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. While part of all that good stuff is not being afraid to have these difficult conversations and Jack's really good with the public and and the the public's thoughtful too. I mean, it works and it it works in Richfield really well. I just wanted to, I don't know, Jack, if you have anything else, but just kind of moving forward with this, in June, there'll be a council meeting. And after this open house next week, Commissioner, like Jack said, will be considering it and hopefully we'll have a final design. There'll be some more different intersection details that will be looked at at Pillsbury. And we did move construction to 2022. I didn't know, I think I mentioned that at our workshop session last week at the retreat. But we're recommending keeping the final design on track so that we can be flexible with the hub. Right now, 2022 probably will work with the hub anyway. But just in case they move things up, we'll be ready to go. So we will bring the preliminary design to the council for consideration next month along with the final design contract. But did you, were you looking for any specific guidance, Jack, unlike the Pillsbury Avenue tonight?
I would say just a general direction, any comments if we're on track, I guess is the.
I think being, from my perspective, you're on track and folks asked the questions that I had as well. Councilmember Whelan?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we're on track. I think I appreciate every time I asked a question that had been brought up or that I had that you you've really thought through that. I think the only comment I would make, and maybe this is already the plan, but just to continue as much as possible, really over-communicating anytime that we are getting community feedback that is is not possible or is we're deciding not to do it for a specific reason, just to keep over-communicating that. I think sometimes people feel like they attend these and they don't, like they offer their feedback and they don't know what happens with it. So even if the answer is like, no, that's not possible or here's actually a stronger reason, we're doing it this way, that people may not agree with our reasons, but I think as much as we can really show that like, yes, we did actually hear what you're suggesting and consider that. I think anytime we do that, it it builds trust and a better understanding of people that, okay, we can have a a discussion where we disagree, but it doesn't. I think too often, we give people reasons to never engage with the city again, whether it's really that either one of us did anything wrong. So I think if we can continue letting them know they've been heard and considered, that that's really important. So thank you.
Other councilmembers, are we generally going in the right direction with this?
Yes.
I think that was Councilmember Garcia. Sorry, I'm having trouble seeing everybody. Is there anyone else that wants to comment before we wrap up? All right, well, then I think we will wrap this up. And we have just a couple of minutes to get something to drink or eat and go to the bathroom quick and we'll see you in a few minutes. See you everybody.